Great. I am Zachary McBride. I guess I am standing in for Rick as chair or moderator of the meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order here, May 23rd, 2024. I think the agenda items have Bob actually last, but if we want, since he's here, if we want to discuss his extension of Washington Street Homes, I think that makes the most sense while we wait for the other applicants to join, if that's okay with you, Bob.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I do have, there was a comment that came in from the Board of Health this afternoon and I'm grateful that it came in this afternoon and not now. I appreciate that. But I would like to address it. I probably need less than two minutes, Zach, if.
Sure, that sounds fine to me.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it was about nitrogen loading and about the court case with the Fields at Sherbin in 2017. That was the substance of the memo. And I just wanted to address the, the kind of, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but it says in the memo to you that the BOH was not directly involved with the court case. The court case is titled Stevens versus the Sherbin Board of Health. The Sherbin Board of Health was the defendant in this court case. So I'm gonna have to say that I don't agree with what this says, that the BOH was not directly involved. I'm sorry. You guys are lawyers. If you're a defendant.
Fair enough.
Directly involved. In that decision, the court found that the Sherbin Board of Health was arbitrary and capricious in two manners. The first, and this is very relevant to the, to the rest of the memo, which was that the Sherbin Board of Health imposed a nitrogen standard at the property line that was inappropriate. And the court found that arbitrary and capricious. The second is not really at issue, at least right now in, in Washington Street Homes. It was certainly at issue in Greenwood, but they also found the Sherbin Board of Health arbitrary and capricious on bedroom count. Okay? So anyway.
Appreciate that perspective and obviously the facts dictate the applicability and will deliberations will, you know, take that into your perspective into consideration and.
I just wanted to address the memo itself, obviously, since it came in today. Yep.
On the item on the agenda, Bob, with respect to your extension, I don't know if your attorney is here and wants to speak on behalf of, you know, your right to, to extend, or you just want to sort of go through it. I know we did receive a letter from him, which didn't seem to seem, unless I missed something, didn't have any legal citations in it. It was more of just a, you know, sort of an opinion that we should be able to extend. So if there's anything else you want to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think his letter speaks for itself. What we were asking, and I think I made it clear. I'm assuming that Rick forwarded my request from a week or two ago. I'm not sure how long ago I sent that request. The, the reason for the request, and I think it's relevant not only to the board, but to the rest of the community, is that I've been in conversations with both neighbors and with, with town officials about trying to come to kind of a looking at the five projects and obviously, you know, two of them, the hearing is now closed. But among the five projects to try to come up with a way that we could create less dense, substantially less density on two of the bigger pieces of land. And kind of, and then what the town would bring to the table would be support for a Lytec building on, on my property on Coolidge Street. And there's a lot, a lot to talk about, and I expect that there will be a public meeting with the select board in the fairly near future, in the next couple of weeks. I don't know the exact date. It hasn't been set. But that's the reason for this. The reason for this is to try to to do something less dense in kind of, and at the same time, getting support for real affordable housing in town. And I think, I hope people think that's a goal that we all share. And I want to take a crack at that over the next three months. So therefore I'm asking for you to continue. I don't think there's anything particular in terms of citations, Zach, that you need. You have the ability kind of under the rules of 40B to continue it to whatever date. You've been doing that all along, obviously. Typically, you've been continuing it out a month. I'm saying continue it out three months to give time for these, hopefully substantive conversations to take place. And so like I said, I don't think it's a complicated, and then what he also said in the letter was that I am willing to, whatever this, and I'm, I'm asking for three months, but whatever that continuance is, the time period, I would agree to extend that on the, on your, I think it's six month deadline for the total hearing period before you have to close it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I guess the question is, you know, you're talking about another project. It's unrelated to Washington from a, from a legal perspective.
Well, I'm talking, no, but it includes Washington.
Right. So I guess, you know, I just want to, I just want to clarify that whatever your plans to adjust a different 40B project, obviously doesn't necessarily have bearing on the Washington Street project and.
Totally understand and agree with you.
And, you know, that's all. So I mean, I guess if you're, you know, if you're considering, you know, scrapping a project, I don't know if that's the case, but for the sake of, you know, town endorsement of another location, ultimately this is, you know, you're sort of, you know, keeping your toe dipped in the water until you know that you have.
Of course.
I guess that's, that's, that's fine. From my perspective, I will of course ask my fellow board to see what their perspective is, but you know, just a reminder, obviously, whatever you do somewhere else has no meritorious bearing on what happens at Washington.
I totally understand and I totally agree. Let me just say one more thing before you move to your colleagues. And that is that the concept would be, the concept for me is I am deeply committed to doing a deeply affordable multifamily project in town. Right now, that is at Washington Street, right? And so if I don't do it at Washington Street, and I, you know, I think there are people in the community that might be in favor of that, then I want to do it somewhere else. Obviously, at Coolidge, we all think that there will be water and sewer in the future over there. So it, you know, anyway, that's.
So on the table is your proposal to table this hearing for 90 days and then give us, I guess, some, the board, an additional extension on the back end.
Exactly. That's my request to you, yes.
Board members, any comments, thoughts, perspectives on his, on the applicant's request here?
Yes, I mean, I think we should allow the requested extension. And including the extent to which it extends the six month period within which we have to act.
I think that that makes sense to me. I don't, I don't, I'm not 100% clear in our authority to require him to do that, but I guess, you know.
Well, he's offered it.
Yeah, he's offering it, yes. And my attorney offered it in writing to you all this afternoon.
Todd, any objections to the extension?
No, no objections. I don't take exception to what Bob is proposing here, and I think he's been pretty forthcoming around what he's looking to do and the reasons for seeking it. So that makes sense.
I'll open up to, I guess, anyone in the community to have any comment of objection. Otherwise, I think the board is in support. So unless there's a voice of nay, then I'd like to move, Brian?
Hi, yes, Brian Moore. I live next to 40, I'm at 49 Farm Road. I live next to the Farm Road Homes project. I saw you all two nights ago. My question is that if we've closed the public hearing on Farm Road Homes, is the Farm Road Homes, Bob, part of this mediation process that you are proposing? Because two nights ago, you said at the beginning of the public meeting, it was your intent to push forward with your 40B proposal for Farm Road Homes.
Sure, it is, it was and is my intent to push forward. I would like to build that project. I will say that if the town denies it, I'll have to consider all the various options.
Okay. Okay. You can direct your questions or comments to the chair, please, Brian.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Procedure.
Sorry. Well, the board, you know, you guys are deliberating on it now. I would hope that there would be some consideration for your deliberations if this applicant is considering rolling another project into the Washington Street mediation process.
Yeah, I don't think that we can consider possibilities in our Farm Road deliberations, unfortunately. It's just not, it's not within our discretion. So I'll look to John's nod. I looked to validate my perspective there, but I think that's the case. So unfortunately, Farm Road is closed, and that is a closed set of facts that we have to deal with. So. Is there any other members of the public that have any comment with respect to this applicant on Washington Street's request to extend, I guess, table the hearing and then extend the board's time to review as well? All right. So any, any motions on the applicant's request? I'll make a motion to grant the applicant's request. John, I'm going to look for you to, I'll try and then hopefully you can artfully correct me. So I make a motion to grant the applicant's request to stay the Washington Street hearing for 90 days and automatic, and as well as grant the board, I guess, an additional 90 days for public hearing. Is that what we're talking about here? In addition to any other extensions that may happen during the course of this public hearing. John, any, any corrections to that motions?
No, no amendments. I second that emotion.
I guess then roll by, vote by roll. Fitch?
Fitch, aye.
Labby?
Labby, aye.
And McBride, aye. So I guess, Bob, you have an ear extension.
Thank you. I appreciate it and I look forward to, look forward to working with folks.
We appreciate the collaborative effort. I'm sure most, on behalf of everyone in town, we appreciate the collaboration. So thank you.
Thank you.
I guess next on the list will be the Wildwood, if the applicant is here.
Yes, I see Eddie.
Yes, I am.
So if, could the applicant, could, for the Wildwood Garage, please, I guess, make a proposal. And if you have anyone here on your behalf you'd like to speak for you, please identify them and we'll let them speak as well.
The Sheng Wang is my engineer.
Hi, Sheng. The Sheng Wang from Creative Land and Water Engineering. So if I may, I can share the plan and just so we can go from there, it's easier to look.
Sounds, sounds good.
Okay. So this is the side plan. I, I also have access to the architect plan. We'll share a little bit later. So the special permit permitting is to allow us to allow Eddie to, to have a separate detached three car garage in addition to what the main house already have. So the zoning by law limited to three car garage. Otherwise, we'll have, need a special permit. That's where we are here for. As take a summary of the project overall, the garage is still within, within, well, actually all side of the setback line, but within the building envelope, as you see here, the red line. So stormwater, we checked it. Everything is good. It's very extensive. If you look in single family house, we have a two small, actually three, water, stormwater management basins and the swales around the driveway. I have been to the side multiple times and there's no sign of really erosion passing the erosion control. Let me show the.
Excuse my ignorance. This is an existing home or is this all, this entire project in new, new construction?
Yeah, it's a new construction have been approved and it's ongoing construction.
Okay. And this is just a special permit for the additional garage space? And how many garage spaces, I guess, are in the, the attached structure? Or what's the total garage spaces, you know, total vehicle spaces?
Overall will be six.
Six, okay.
Yeah. So there are three for the, for the attached to the house and then the separate.
And just to confirm, the building meets all current setback regulations?
Everything is in compliance. The lot itself is, is a, is a, is a special lot because it's over 90 acres land, but we don't have the required frontage. But so because of, it's like, that's why they require 125 feet setback from all the building properties. So the lot itself is approved, the lot and
Okay.
All the building setbacks, everything subject system is all approved and so, so this special permit is basically to get, to, to, to have this separate detached garage, which was on the plan before. It's just have to have a special permit for the building permit.
So has this, has this property already come before zoning for variance on the frontage?
Yes, that's before, before Eddie took over the ownership.
Okay. Jonathan, do you have any recollection here? I don't know if you want to.
I don't. Jeanie would be our expert on.
Zach, because it's a back lot, it's, it's approved by the planning board.
Okay.
It has to have double the acreage of the area.
I see.
And the setbacks are for this area 125 feet.
Okay.
And the garage.
Good.
The garage has some room, has a room on the second floor. The Board of Health will be discussing this at their June 6th meeting. So when you, we, when the decision letter is written, that'll be part of the, the conditions that it passes all other regulatory boards.
Okay. Sorry, DeShang, and just to confirm, this garage meets all setbacks otherwise, right? And what is, what are the setbacks for this? Is this, is this RA3?
Yeah, so this setback is a little bit different as Jeanie just described it. So the, it's 125 feet of pride. It was, it's located in the, in the RP zone, so three acre
Yeah.
zoning.
Yep.
But our lot is over nine acres because of the frontage.
So the, but the, but the only non-conforming issue is the frontage, that the building itself is not encroaching on a setback. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yeah, the, all those buildings, the main house is not, and the proposed garage, as you can see.
That's what you're read, that's what the red dotted line is, is the.
That's the setback line. So we are within the building envelope line or the, beyond the setback line.
Okay. Is the, can the, is the owner want to have, have anything to say on his own behalf, or are we going to open up to the board and the public?
No, I'm good. The Sheng already said whatever needs to be said. So I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Unless you, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Board members, any questions, thoughts?
What is the purpose for six garage spaces?
To put my six cars.
Oh.
Wow. Good question, good answer.
Okay. Well, I know there's a living space. Well, it could be a living space above the garage.
My, my plan, my plan is to do a gym because I'm not going to finish the basement on that house. My plan is to do a gym on top of the garage.
Is there a shower going there next?
No, no.
Okay, well, anything we approve would be subject to the approval of the Board of Health with respect to that space?
Yes, and I, and I'm aware of it.
Well, under section 3.2.21, we can approve garage spaces for more than three cars. So I would favor doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And DeShang, are you putting up the rendering right now of?
That's right. Yeah, right. Just sort of, you see the, the rendering of the garage.
And does this, does this match the style of the house?
Yeah. It's a. Yeah, the garage was originally designed together with the main house and it was on the side plan. It's just when he, when Ed, applying for the building permit, we find this one has to have a special permit.
Right. Mr. Labby, any, any comments, thoughts?
No, no, no additional comments or thoughts. Obviously, anything would have to be conditioned upon Board of Health review and approval.
Yeah. Any members of the public who would like to speak? DeShang, can you stop sharing unless someone asks you to put it back up, just so I can see folks on the screen?
Sure, okay.
Actually, I do just have one other question. So the applicant is stating that the garage space is used for, for housing his personally owned vehicles. So there, there won't be any commercial activity underway in this newly built garage?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to comment? No?
I don't see anything.
Jonathan, I'm going to ask you to make, I'm going to ask you to make the motion since you have the stat, the provision in front of you, if that's okay.
I, I move that we grant a special permit for the construction of this detached three car garage. As a permissive use under section 3.2.21. And our approval would be subject to review and the approval of the Board of Health.
I second that.
I second that motion.
Give it to Todd. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Jonathan. Any objections? No? So vote by roll, Mr. Fitch?
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby?
Aye.
McBride, aye, passes. So good luck on the construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Have a great night, guys, and have a very nice holiday.
Thanks you too.
You too.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, Mr. Weatherall, you have a permit to operate a food service. I'm going to miss, I'm going to misspeak, some sort of food service establishment. So a special permit request. So if you want to speak about what you're seeking here, that would be great.
Well, I was just seeking permission to change what is now a blank white panel on that street sign to the graphic that Jeanie would have circulated to the board.
Okay, so it's just a signage request?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't need to do the retail space? No?
Oh, do I? I get, I'm sorry. I, yeah, yeah.
Cause it's new from the Dunkin' Donuts. So I, I think you have to do.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I'm, I'm, my head's not in the game. I I am working with an architect and a builder to repurpose the space vacated by the Dunkin' Donuts and expand my store. Specifically, I'd like to offer meals to go.
So do you have someone in mind to operate this, or is this something you're going to operate?
I'll, I'll do it myself with my own staff.
Okay. Have you already consulted the Board of Health? Where are you with the remainder of the approvals and the processes? Just out of curiosity.
As I said, I'm working with an architect and a contractor. When we have the architect have the plans all the way to Bright and have a stamp on it, we'll submit for a building permit. Building permit goes to the building department and the Board of Health. So I presume that's how they would prefer it to be circulated.
So it's premature to have consulted them at this point is what you're suggesting?
Well, they have, insofar as they have nothing to opine on.
Okay.
We've met, we've had conversations with the health inspector, Tom Curran, but only because that's, you know, he's a terrific resource and it's good to get some insight. But we don't have, as I said, we don't have, we have draft plans, but, but nothing, nothing that we want to waste anyone's time with until probably the week after next.
Yep. Any material changes to, I guess, water or sewer volumes based from, from the, from the Dunkin' Donuts, you know, and that you can see?
Well, it won't be, you know, no tables, no chairs. We're not permitted for anything like that. Be strictly expanding my current offering. You know, I have, I have packaged foods. This would be foods prepared on site, then put in a package to bring home and consume.
Okay.
So adding a kitchen, adding a kitchen beyond the equipment that had previously been in place there to service the Dunkin' Donuts?
Well, just adding newer, more sophisticated equipment.
Board members, any questions?
Well, is the size of the existing sign changing?
No, same, same size. It's roughly two by eight.
How many, how many square feet is that?
Two times eight is 16, so.
16 square feet, but the, the signage you're adding is in addition to what's there for the Sherbin Fuel Market and Gas.
The sign as it exists, you know, has a panel on top that says Sherborn Fuel and to the right on either side, looking at, there's the three flavors of gasoline and the price. And below that, there was a panel two by eight that said Dunkin' Donuts. They moved, removed the panel, replaced it with two white pieces of plastic. I'm just requesting that instead of two blank white pieces of plastic, we have a sign that indicates there'll be meals to go inside.
Do you have a rendering of that proposed sign?
Yes. Yeah, Jeanie has it.
Pull that up or?
Do you want me to pull it? I, I mean, I could.
I sent it to you yesterday.
I can try to find it. Hold on, just give me a second.
I have it. Do you want me to share mine? I have it.
You have it? Yeah, you found it.
So Jean, just a point of procedural order. Are we reviewing his permit to offer a food establishment under a special permit and a sign or just?
It's, what it is, is it's going to be, it's going to, it's an adjustment or to his existing store, which is going to now encompass the Dunkin' Donuts, and then you'll also approve the signage at the same time. So he doesn't have to come back.
Got it.
Can you see my screen?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Alex, just a quick question. This pizza deli, does the pizza also encompass the rustic pizza sign or is that in the?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to call out that there's pizza and.
Yeah, okay. So that's, 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 will take the place of any rustic pizza sign on this particular media board?
Yeah, I don't intend to
Okay.
Call out rustic pizza. That's.
Yep. Okay. Board members, any other thoughts or concerns, comments before I, I see Daryl has her hand up and I'll open to the public.
I don't, I don't have a comment beyond being supportive of what is proposed here. uh, being supportive of what is proposed here. Um, more, more good food to take home for dinner. That's, that's a great idea. And the, the sign is um, faithful thought in me.
Great. Um, Daryl, I see your hands up if you want to, you want to speak?
Sure. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like it's working terrific. Um, I, I like that Alex is working through what they want to do. That'll certainly streamline things for him coming to the Board of Health. So that's great. Uh, I just want to point out, and Jeannie just mentioned it, that the existing, um, building and then the Dunkin' Donuts are both on the same septic system. So, uh, there isn't really the capacity left by the Dunkin' Donuts for the space that it left. So the health agent is ready to look at the gallonage that the current septic system can accept and then whatever state regulations there are for the type of operation that Alex might set up. And there are numbers that have to be assigned to that for gallonage, but so far the health agent knows that there is some extra capacity. And then the question is just, does it match up with the new plan? So that'll be coming and that's anticipated.
And thank you.
Um, I guess, is there any disagreement between you and the applicant on like the classification of the usage or anything like that? Or is, you know, i.e., you know, tables and chairs? I don't know if that increases the perceived utilization. I, I just want to make sure that we're all aligned in what the, what the ask is.
Alex, did you say no table and chairs?
No, this isn't, this isn't a restaurant. It's just, it's just meals to go.
Well, there are tables and chairs adjacent to the, uh, pizza operation, aren't there?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I, Daryl's an expert in, in septic. I'm not. I know that we spent two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We put in a massive septic system that, that has more than enough capacity for what I'm trying to do. But again, I think she's right. That conversation is pending.
Okay.
You have to start somewhere. I started with you because as I said, we don't have the plans to show Daryl's people yet.
Yep. Okay.
Uh, if I, if I can add a comment, this is Mark Orem with the Board of Health on the health.
Sure, Mark. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, well, now that we know what the use will be, this is the first time I have heard what the use will be. So we'll look at that as Daryl's noted and then we'll go from there on making sure there's enough capacity. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, well, based on the signage, um, and the services, I, I'm supportive, uh, so I would make a motion. I don't, I guess I'm, I didn't know that the signage was on deck tonight, so I just want to make sure that we're, we're moving to approve the right, the right things, um, Jean. So I guess is the signage appropriately on deck for approval or does that have to just be procedurally a second request?
But no, he, he applied for, um, he applied for retail space and signage.
Okay. So, um, I will move, uh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just a clarification. Both of those requests and/or our approval would of course be subject to Board of Health sign off and approval, right? We couldn't have a sign prematurely placed up there. It's not fully approved as an operation.
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay, okay.
Well, it'll be subject to all other board approvals, uh, prior to hours going live, if that is right, Jonathan.
Okay.
Yeah, just, you know, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, it, it's pointless for somebody in my position to work linearly. To the extent you can, you, you try to set initiatives and motions, they can work in parallel.
Understood.
If Mark Orem and, if Mark and Daryl decide that I don't have the capacity, then you know, we'll come back and ask for intimate long, inter intimate apparel space, you know, I, I don't know.
Yes.
No, I, I, I understood and, and, and I'm also, as Jonathan mentioned, I'm also supportive of what you're trying to do.
I love, uh, the, the, the headquarters for I Love Sherborne hats, I guess.
That's it. I mean, I, you know, Je- Jeannie's terrific and I, if I have an opportunity, I appear and that way I just, I just set things in motion. We'll see where this goes. I, you know.
Yeah. Uh, well, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the applicant's, uh, request, uh, for the food service, the special apartment for the food service and the, the sign, uh, signage, um, subject to, um, all their board's, uh, approval, uh, that has jurisdiction.
Do you want to give it a term?
Uh, the approval, um, how long, is there any, is there any cap on how long I can give that term just out of curiosity or?
It's usually five years, but you can, because it's new, you can do it for one and two, or you can give it to five.
Um, I'd probably start with two, just, uh, for iterative, iterative purposes, um, on both for, for benef- the benefit of both the applicant and the town. So I'd probably move for two years.
I second that emotion.
Can I ask a question? You wanted to be two years from the time he opens? Because this could be a few more months or?
Yeah, that's, let's do two years from the time he is able to open.
Okay.
Okay.
So Jonathan, do you second that?
I second it.
Great. Uh, we'll take a vote by roll. Jonathan, uh, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Labby?
Aye.
Uh, McBride, aye. Uh, good luck, Alex. I hope, uh, hope you go smoothly.
Thank, thank you all very much.
Um, I think that's it for the evening. Unless we want to talk about scheduling, Jean?
Uh, Bob has his hand up and Daryl has her.
Sure. Um, can't see that. So I guess, uh, Daryl, you want to go first?
Uh, okay. It may be inappropriate. I was just going to address some of Bob's concerns that he expressed earlier about the memo that was sent in, but it was on Washington Street.
Uh, Bob, just before I entertain any further conversation, because we've already voted to extend, I'm just curious, what, what do you might have the?
Well, my, 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 my comment, sorry Zach, or, or, uh, question is, um, just, it's really procedural and that is, I believe you guys voted tonight to extend it by ninety days. None of us looked at the calendar to see what date that was.
Yeah.
And, and I, I think, I think you need to extend it to a certain date, but it, if it's a Sun, Saturday or Sunday, I don't know that you want to do that. I, 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 maybe it doesn't need to be resolved, but it occurred to me, it could be a snafu.
Uh, thanks. Point. Uh, so I guess let's, let's take care of that and then we'll, um, work towards Daryl's comment. So Jean, do we have to set a date on the extension?
Was there a date in your letter, Bob? Was it August?
I, I had just said three months, but I, I'm happy for the board to just choose a date that's approximately ninety days that works for the board. I, I just, you know, if ninety days is a Saturday night, I don't think anyone wants to get together.
What do we, uh?
It is in June.
No, it'd be in August, wouldn't it?
That's what I said. August twenty, all right, August twenty-second is, um, a Thursday night. The twenty-third is a Friday night. We're not doing that.
I'm fine. August twenty-second or any other date.
Okay, fine. Twenty seconds, fine.
Okay.
So this is a hearing for Washington Street on the twenty-second. Um, Daryl, you can comment tonight, I guess, on Washington Street or you can, um, wait till the twenty-second. It's up to you.
Oh, it's just minor, uh, while it's fresh in everyone's mind. So not being a lawyer, uh, the terminology directly involved was relating to that the Board of Health members had not participated in the writing of the materials that were provided to the court regarding the case. Nor did any board members testify or attend the, the, the hearing.
You're talking about current?
Whatever, whatever.
Current, who, who's speaking about all the current board members not having?
No, I'm talking about the board members who were, uh, the people who were on the board at the time of the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that's, so that was what directly meant. Clearly the process of the Board of Health on that project was the subject of the case. And then just one other, and again, since we weren't there, we don't know how science got interpreted. Uh, but we were not looking at the nitrogen loading at property line. We were looking at how it might affect the onsite wells for that project. So it was a different animal, so to speak. That's it.
Thank you, Daryl. Um, Jonathan, it looks, do you have something to say or are you just yawning?
I was, I was going to, uh, I mean, if anybody else in the public has something to say, that's great. If not, I would move to adjourn meeting.
I second that. Any objections? Wonderful. Uh, we'll vote to adjourn by roll. Jonathan Fitch?
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby?
Aye.
McBride, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Well, thanks.
Bye.